Counsel, I've got a little after six o'clock right now. It's June the 4th, 2013, 6:00 PM, 6:04 exactly, at City Hall here at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And let's get these new microphones in order here. All right down there? Okay. I'm now going to call the City Council to order. I'd like to invite my friend Bob Purnell down here to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and also followed by the Texas Pledge.
Would you bow your head with me, please? Dear Lord, we thank you for the coming together of our community to rebuild the destroyed homes and shattered lives as a result of the recent storms. We thank you for people stepping up to serve in our city government. We ask that you grant them wisdom and courage to lead wisely and do what is right. All this we ask in Jesus' holy name. Come in.
Amen.
Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. We've got these new microphones here where you can walk around, so we're trying to get used to using them. At this time, the Senate Council will provide an opportunity for citizens to present concerns and address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the open-mic period. The City Council meeting does this each month one time, and the person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary to provide the following information: their name, address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at any one time, and only that person at the microphone, upon recognition of the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than an individual council or City Council member or staff. The speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make the information available to the City Council and the City Manager if requested. The City Council will allow to receive input or information for the future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The Council shall allot a maximum of 30 minutes for the open-mic during the designated council member. The first person I have right here now is Mr. Ken Hackett. Ken?
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name's Ken Hackett, a resident at 2715 Harborside Drive, but I've come here to speak on behalf of Granbury Square Plaza and parking in and around the square. We all know that we are suffering through the lack of parking due to the construction of the Opera House. And although everyone supports that, it continues to be an ongoing problem with our current merchants and businesses in and around the square. I appreciate the Council recently allowing street parking along Crockett Street, but I've asked that the Council go further than they have so far, I guess, granted. My understanding is you've only allowed it along the west side of the street, and Granbury Square Plaza would respectfully request that be allowed on both sides of the street, along South Crockett, to gather every parking space we possibly can get for our merchants, our restaurants, and those people coming to the square. I also would request the Council to... request them to restore the some 14 parking spaces currently lost by the storing of the rock and the container behind the bathrooms. Every space counts right now. It's as precious as gold and, as we know now, water in our community. Walking distance is important to every merchant. The nutshell needs more parking. We need more parking. Even the gold-plated parking lot along Brazos Street is full even on average weekends. We need every parking place we can. And when we first heard about the construction project at the Opera House, I remember being told that the rock would be palletized and then stored at the city yard. Now we see it's taking up valuable parking places, as well as the storage containers that I believe just has things for the Opera House. That too, those too, can be moved temporarily until we get back to the parking area. So, please, consider every parking space valuable, and I think any restrictions around parking on the street within a block or two of the square should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett. Our next speaker will be Julie Purnell. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and Councilpeople. In this time when we are suffered so much, it's always nice to come before you with joyous news. As you know, I've worked almost six years now with other people in the community and your city staff to complete the firefighter park with different phases. We dedicated the cover and the trees, and it was always the desire of ours for the last phase to be, to connect with the fence that ends down on the east side and go all the way back around to the hiking back trail, so that that deep ditch on that end would be secluded and away from small children. And about a month ago, I walked by there, and a mom sure enough was chasing her little one down that had run toward the ditch. So, I decided, you know, it's time. So, once again, I turned to the Inges, and Charles and Dominic Inge came to our rescue, and we will now be able to put that fence along that area, and that's the very last phase after six years of the firefighter park. And on that last section, we're planning to paint with some local artists, myself included, a beautiful mural with children and perhaps small fire trucks. So, I want to rejoice with the City Council that has been so supportive, and all the people in the community that have been so supportive, that we will have that final phase thanks to the Inges.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Before we enter into the consent agenda here, I'd like to just make one more comment here. I know I talked about it at the last council meeting, but since we've got an open-mic tonight and we've got a lot of citizens out there, I want to once again thank everybody that has come forward and helped out there in the disaster area and has participated in getting these people back to a normal life out there. You know, it's a county thing out there, but we, as the city, have joined in, and we've helped out as much as a lot of the folks out there and a lot of the folks out here in the audience here has helped out. And we've got people that we know out there, and you know, it's just, it's amazing when you go out there and look at that development out there and see what they're doing right now, because this community, this... and when I say this community, I'm talking about Granbury, Texas, has come together and went out there and put that thing back together and are working to put it back together. And the habitat homes, they're on the process of rebuilding all those, and the people that have lost their homes are in the process of putting them back into place. They're giving them help with insurance, and I mean, it's just amazing what's going on out there. So, I want to applaud, once again, everybody that has participated out there, whether it be joining in the efforts to help, your prayers that's been out, or your contributions that's been out there. I want to thank you all again, and thank the people out there that you know that have helped out. Thank you very much.
See, Mayor? Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure, Mr. Allen, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I know we can't respond back to Mr. Hackett, but on the parking lot, Wayne, how many spaces we're going to have, and will that be ready by July 4th?
The new parking lot, Wayne?
Yes. Why? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to consent agenda. The first consent agenda is to approve the minutes of the council meeting of May the 21st, 2013. Counsel, you've had an opportunity to read those minutes and look over those. Are there any questions or any concerns or any changes to be made to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of May 21st, 2013. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
I've got a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second? I'll second it. I'm going to take that one, Mr. Allen.
Oh, hold on a second. Can I take a second? I just realized what you asked. You're asking about the new parking lot over here.
I'm talking about the one right across the street.
Oh, that's not behind the Opera House.
No, 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 I'm talking about the one that they're doing.
Oh, yes, it will be.
And that's going to be 70 something spaces or something?
Yeah, about 70.
So, that's going to have a lot to for downtown.
Yeah, we're talking about the parking lot over on...
Right off 51.
I was talking about the...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, folks. That wasn't on the agenda, but that is a true statement there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we've got a first and a second on the minutes. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved. Our next item is a public hearing to appeal the decision of denial of the assurance of the certification approval by the Granbury Historical Commission on April 11, 2013. The request for a CNA proposed by the applicant was for the demolition of a single-family residence, including an accessory building and a fence located at 605 West Bluff Street. Mr. Scott Sopchek, could you enlighten us on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, Counsel, Mr. Manager. What's being requested is an appeal to the City Council regarding a...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Scott. I failed to mention that Councilman Perkel possibly has a conflict of interest, although he can stay seated here, but if he chooses to excuse himself, he can do so.
I have hard feelings about this, but I think I need to excuse myself, even though I have deep beliefs on which way it should go. It's a situation that is personal.
Thank you, Mr. Perkel. I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor Protem, this is an appeal to the City Council regarding an action of the Historic Commission regarding the denial of a demolition request under a certificate of appropriateness that was determined by the Historic Commission in April. The zoning ordinance allows for an appeal to the City Council regarding a decision of denial by the Commission. The applicant did, in fact, write that appeal post-decision of the Historic Commission in order to get that overturned. The vote by the Historic Commission was closed. It was a vote of three to two to deny the request. To give you a little background on the application itself, the structure on the site is a single-family residential structure. You can see the picture there. It was inventoried by the Community Development Department. It's shown on the inventory as a medium priority structure. All this information was brought forward to the Historic Commission. They deliberated in earnest, and again, the three-two decision to deny the request. One of the things at the meeting that caused some concern, and I'll just dive off into that here and now, was the applicant's initial proposal to raise the site and put an eight-plex on the site itself. That's not before you. The only thing before you tonight is the request for the demolition and to overturn it or not, as requested by the applicant and as posted on your agenda. You can see that the area by zoning district is single-family residential. So, if the Council does, in fact, overturn the Historic Commission and allow for the raising of the site for the accessory structure, the primary structure and the fence, the only thing the owner could build at this point in time is a single-family residence. It is located in the Historic Preservation Overlay. Any new permit activity would have to go back to the Historic Commission for review and approval. If the applicant does want to go forward with a multi-family request, it'll have to be tracked through the P&amp;Z and City Council for final approval. At that point, I had a conversation with the applicant. The applicant's very aware that the decision tonight in no way, shape, or form affects any future land use entitlement. The only entitlement he has in play at this point in time is to permit single-family residential if, in fact, the Council approves the demolition request. I do want to add a couple other sidebar comments. The applicant was good enough to provide an independent, neutral inspector regarding the house. One of the things that was discussed at the Historic Commission was the state of the structure itself. Hopefully, you have in your agenda packet a very thick, detailed inspection report that goes into the plumbing and the foundation and the structural integrity of the site, the electrical. All that was itemized. We also have a one-page report from your building inspector that basically succinctly reiterates what that voluminous inspection report states, that the structure is somewhat We did receive three letters regarding this particular request. Get over to the zoning map. You can see the letters that we received. Compromised roughly 4% of the joint property. Since it's 20%, less than 20%, it doesn't require a supermajority vote by Council. You can basically take a majority vote to overturn the Historic Commission from their And I believe that's all the report I have for you, Mr. Mayor Protem. If you have any questions, certainly, I'll be happy to entertain any.
Counsel, this time, I'll open the public hearing for people out in the audience, and I think we have a speaker, the first speaker being Mary Saltirelli. Is she out there in the audience? Please state your name and address and...
Good evening, Council members. Mayor Protem Hewlett and City Manager McHathen. I'm Mary Saltirelli, and I'm the Consulting Executive Director for Preserve Granbury, and I live at 410 Heritage Trail in Granbury. This craftsman-style cottage at 605 West Bluff Street that you're considering tonight, through research I found, was built between February 1932 and March 1945, before many of the other mid-twentieth-century houses along West Bluff Street. As Scott said, in 2001, members of the Granbury Historic Preservation Commission surveyed this house and all the houses in the neighborhood while we were preparing a preservation plan for the city. The professional consultant, Ron Emrich, who led the city in preparing the plan, classified this house as a medium preservation priority. In Granbury's preservation plan, which was published in 2002 and accepted by the City Council, "A medium priority building contributes significantly to local history or broader historical neighborhoods. It's a significant or typical example of architecture, is an outstanding example of a common local building type." Local historian Mary Kate Durham told us in November 2001 that this house was built right at the end of World War II, at a time of great housing shortages here and all across the country. It was built for Vernon L. Fisher and his wife Geneva. Mr. Fisher was a leading businessman in Granbury during the middle of the 20th century, and he owned and operated Maybell Sportswear, which was located downtown. The Fisher's son Vernon, you may have heard of him, he graduated from Granbury High School, and he has become an internationally-known modern artist, whose work has been shown at the Guggenheim Museum in New York, the Herschorn Museum in Washington, D.C., and the Modern Art Museum in Fort Worth. Preserve Granbury feels strongly that the City Council should uphold the decisions of the Commissions and boards you appoint. A majority of members of Granbury's Historic Preservation Commission believe that the mid-twentieth-century cottage at 605 West Bluff Street should be preserved, and Preserve Granbury agrees wholeheartedly with their decision. The houses along West Bluff and West Doyle Streets make up a complete district of mid-twentieth-century homes. Mr. A.W. Norman of Norman Lumber Company built many of these houses as Granbury's veterans returned home from the war looking for homes for their young families. To begin demolishing these houses would affect the overall charm and integrity of this residential neighborhood, which was zoned as historic in 2002 because it reflects the history of its era. When the historic preservation first started in our country in the 1960s, it was focused on preserving houses of early settlement. At that time, many people felt that Victorian houses were not worthy of being preserved. And today, it's the queen and Victorian houses in our city that make Granbury what it is. What we need to be focused on now is preserving the humble arts and crafts and modern-style houses of the mid-twentieth century. So, there are three important reasons for you to preserve what we're now calling the Fisher House: to uphold the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission members who you appointed and have trained; because it has architectural significance as the oldest house in an intact district of mid-twentieth-century houses; and because it has historic significance as the home of an internationally-known modern artist, Vernon Fisher and his family. Preserve Granbury urges you to save the Fisher House at 605 West Bluff Street and keep the mid-twentieth-century neighborhood west of the Times Square intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker was going to be Diane Williams. And Counsel, I'm going to hold all questions to these individuals until we've heard all the speakers speak, and then if you have any individual comments you want to make to individual speakers, we can do so. Diane?
Good evening, Counsel. I'm a property owner on the street in question, on West Bluff. We own two properties on that street.
Go ahead and state your address, your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where I live now is 6605 Colonial Drive.
Thank you, ma'am.
We are property owners on West Bluff. We own two adorable cottages, just adjacent to the one in question. And as far as the property's ability to be rehabilitated, we also own a property at 119 West Bluff, which is much older than the one in question, which we rehabilitated at not a great cost at all and has proved to be a wonderful rental unit for us. We also owned Manner of Time Bed and Breakfast, which is 125-years-old, and continued to maintain that while we owned it. One of the reasons that this town has the reputation that it does is because we've been so careful with our history. And as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for four years, it was my absolute joy and delight to help with that. I think the Commission should very carefully consider what the Historic Preservation Commission has decided. And as a homeowner who loves old homes, I hope you'll carefully consider this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gary Sanford. Is that right? Okay. Our next speaker is Tracy Harper.
I'm normally a very fluid speaker, but this is a very personal issue for me. I live at... my husband and I live at 615 West Bluff, which is the red-roofed house adjacent to the property that is under consideration. So, we are the only next-door neighbor to this property. We sought out to move to Granbury in the 90s. We wanted to move from the Metroplex to a smaller town to raise our children, and we wanted an old house. And we looked in Granbury from '90 to '95. At that time, many of the houses had been pristinely restored and had historical markers, and they were not in the budget of a young couple with two small children, or they were falling down, which was also not in the budget of a young couple with two small children. After five years of looking, we found this, our house, which was owned by the Cass Stevens, walked in it, knew it was my house. Five weeks later, we were living in it. We've been there almost 18 years, raised our children there. We moved to Granbury, specifically picked Granbury because of the charm and the old homes and the friendly feel. Our neighborhood is intact. In fact, when we moved in in '95, many of our neighbors were the original builders of that house. Unfortunately, some have passed because they were built in the 40s to early 50s, but many of our neighbors were the original builders. They had raised their families there. Their grandchildren were visiting them there, which is what Ty and I intend to do in our house. No one is more saddened by the lack of love shown to 605 West Bluff by the folks that have inhabited that house for the 17 years we've lived next door. But I believe it's restorable. I mean, so many of the houses, back when we even started looking in the 90s, houses that we just thought, man, they can't be saved, are now pristine and have historical markers. And our neighborhood is not Victorian, as Mary said, but I think it's an important part of our history. We are a small, little area intact that's a family area. I would just beg you, like I said, it's very, very personal to me because this is... we share the fence that's falling down. You know, it needs love and it needs help, but there's... I believe someone with a vision could restore it. We met Mr. Fisher when we first moved in. He sold the house to these folks and built himself a brick home on Doyle right behind it, and he told me how he sold our property to the Cass Stevens and that he bought that lot for that beautiful tree that's in the middle of the yard. I just can't bear the thought of something else being there. So, I would plead with you to, being in the overlay, the Historic Preservation Commission is, I think, looking out for our best interests, and I would just plead with you to consider upholding their decision. Thank you for your consideration.
So, at this time, I think I'll call upon David Zunker, which is the... property owner.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is the plan that we...
Go ahead and state your name and address, David.
Oh, my name is David Zunker. I live at 405 Bonita Drive. And while listening to everybody, there's had... the big key to remember is the only conversation today is permitting the house potentially for knocking it down or demo. That is the only question that we're talking about today. And the biggest thing on our situation is if you look at the report that y'all were given by Mr. Howes, it's an 18-page report showing the lack of foundation, water coming through the roof, the total lack of safety issues that this house could potentially have on neighboring kids, neighboring families, those types of issues. The current owners of the house that we have under contract live in Arizona. They are not coming back. They potentially have... they do have a mortgage on the house that if they do choose not to continue paying if we cannot get this property purchased, there's another foreclosure here in Granbury. And with this house not being kept up, with having those safety issues, that's a big concern with it. One of the other... a couple other points on with it, I don't know in the packet of the Hood County Appraisal District report was put in there, that shows as of this year, the Hood County Appraisal District has valued that house at $0. So, they have taken that report that we have provided to them and had the same determination that that house currently has no value, and the only value on it is the actual land they're with it. And one of the other reasons why I look at purchasing this house is in 2008, when the City Council in the city of Granbury spent a ton of money and man-hours developing the future... future growth plan of Granbury, this is actually a commercial district house in the future use of Granbury. I don't know if the tenants, if the residents know that or not, but this is right on that borderline with it as a buffer zone from residential to the commercial side of South Morgan Street. So that's kind of our three reasons why we think the house should at least be approved for demo. I know there's a lot of issues of what we're going to do with it or not, not what we're going to do with it, but the biggest issue for the council right now is to decide, can we allow a safety hazard to be demolished? Thank you.
Thank you, David. At this time, I'll go ahead and call upon Gary Sanford. Is it Sanford? I'm sorry.
Gary Sanford, 521 West Doyle. I walk in my front door, I look at the back of this house. There shouldn't be any misunderstanding. It's not about safety, it's about getting permission to tear down that house to put up a two-story, eight-unit apartment building in the story. That's the whole deal. The fact, you know, it amazed me that when he said it's a zero value, I think what better property, we're going to have these within historic districts because that's old houses. What better property for a young family to come in and buy, if it goes to foreclosure, then have the money to put in and be living in a special place in Granbury town? The historic district or the historic toll? This house is not in foreclosure. Mr. Zunker wants to use the words danger and, and, and things, you know, about how bad it's going to be. What he's wanting is a knee-jerk reaction out of this council to allow him to tear down a house. He's not asking you to tear down my house. He's asking you to help destroy my neighborhood. And these are, folks, I'm glad to see that other people here besides me feel the same way. It's not about that house. It's about neighborhood and integrity of a neighborhood. It's a single-family, quiet neighborhood right now. If you allow this house to be torn down, that's the first step in taking it somewhere else. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'll entertain the council to ask questions. Is there any questions to the, the public council?
I've got one to Scott's check. Thank you. Scott, do we, I know we have ordinance on keeping a house up, but we see this in a lot of neighborhoods, just not in this neighborhood, where they get run down, fences like that, paint job looks awful. One of them is not in the city limits, out there by Billy Wally's funeral home. You know, I mean, nothing we do because it's not in the city limits, I guess, but it looks awful. Is there anything we can do here to make the homeowner bring it into code?
We, we do have a...
Can I have your turn?
She's asking for Stuart. We do have a provision of the code of ordinance that addresses substandard structures that once they get to a point where they're considered dangerous, then the city basically can notify the property and remediate it. And one of the issues is to go through the Building Standards Board of Appeals and, and have it addressed by the Building Standards Board of Appeals. The other issue is we have a provision in the zoning ordinance under special districts, which is the historic overlay demolition by neglect, where, where there's an obligation of, of the property owner to maintain. It's kind of a heightened maintenance requirement within the special districts preservation overlay for the maintenance of that, and certainly can't address properties for lack of maintenance for structures that are actually getting deteriorated in the historic overlay.
Has the city ever issued a citation for this?
We have never, to my knowledge, issued a citation on, or even addressed.
On any of them, or?
We've addressed certain, some properties with demolition by neglect in order to try to get them ratcheted up, but it's, it's pretty difficult.
Have you looked at this house since it's been on the agenda?
We have not.
Okay.
Scott, that was my question, whether or not this house, at what point would it be considered to be, uh, subject to being condemned? Because I did look at the property, and I mean, it's, it's, I don't, you know, if I was going out to buy this property, I would think, well, you know what, it's going to cost me more to fix it than it is to build another structure there.
And, and that's one of the, one of the things that is addressed generally by the Building Standards Board of Appeals is whether or not the point of, the property being condemnable relative to the property value is weighed at the Building Standards Board of Appeals in order to issue a, an allowance to take the building down and raise the site. But again, we, you know, the first, this is the first step, basically, is to actually get an independent contractor to walk through there. I can tell you when we do it, when we initiate...
And do their own demo.
Pardon me?
And do their own demo.
Yeah, well, and, and that way, the city's not encumbering the cost of raising the site.
I can, I can tell you that I've asked to have two or three houses looked at for possible condemnation, and the inspector looks at it, and the, and the hurdle you have to jump over to actually do that is amazing. The houses are in very bad shape, but still, he, he cannot get over the requirements that you have to have to get it. So I've, I've been amazed with what, this is, this is a better-looking house than what I've seen other...
And I think what we're looking at too, though, is this house lays in the historical overlay where if, if there was a house out there in just a residential area that, that was like this in this condition, then a developer could come in and demo it without going through any red tape or any, or permission, and demo it and rebuild a house, but if they wanted to go into a, wanted to zone it commercial, then they would have to go get the proper procedure to get zoning and, and all that for like a multiple home.
Well, I'm just saying that to have the city have the right to it, that it's almost impossible.
I got you.
I've been, I've seen houses that I would have thought needed to be torn down.
Well, and it's a, it's a very lengthy process, too. You have to prove up safety, and then you're getting into property takings issue, you know? The, the pendulum certainly swings toward the rights of the property owner to maintain the property without any kind of governmental intrusion. On, on the Mayor Pro Tem's point, I would say, by the mere fact that this is in the preservation overlay, there's that added, added regulatory language that the expectation of the maintenance of it and it not be taken down is bolstered up by the zoning ordinance because it is in the preservation overlay.
Counsel, is there any more questions to the public?
I've got one more. Did Mr. Yonker, Yoker, Yonker? Did, did you get any estimates what it would cost to get it fixed?
Uh, ready, overseas with everything preparation, putting it in together. I do not have that since he was working on a project on the square. Can't think of the new name of the place. He was at about 75,000 to 80,000, it was climbing from there, but though I do not have anything writing to bring you.
I don't know if it would pass or not.
That's, that's to demo it. That's just, that's just to demo it, or?
Uh, no, no, sir. That is the number to, to start rehabbing the house.
Oh.
Would, would, I don't know if we can get it passed yet or not, but I'd like to see us postpone this the next meeting to give you time to get an estimate on it, to come back and see what it would cost to get it fixed. I was talking to the mayor.
Okay, counsel.
I would, personally, I would be disinclined to postpone this or look at it again. We've had no compelling evidence or no compelling facts that would cause us or give us any reason at all to override the historic commission.
So, so folks, you've heard from the council here, and, and I'm, I'm going to close the, if, if there's no more questions to the public, I'm going to close the public hearing here. But at this time, you've heard from the council that they, they would like to take another look at this thing and, and reevaluate this. I don't think that the time, the time portion of it is a, a factor here because it looks like the house is sitting there and going to sit there for a while until something either is, is, is done with, either, either demoed or, or remodeled. Personally, I, I took a good, hard look at this place. I, for one, would not want to go in here and try to, to remodel or to rehab this house. I would probably go in there and, and demo the house and probably put something else there that would be, that would look like the existing area and stuff, but, and I'm sure that's what the, the citizens out there are wanting. But I would surely accommodate the council if they want to make a motion to table this at this time and to bring it up and, and do some more research and look at this and bring it up at a later date.
Well, I'd like to say...
Mr. Couch?
I appreciate Mr. Zunker's desire to, to own this property and to develop it into something better. At the same time, I'm, I'm very reluctant to overturn the commission, listening to the neighbors. I feel I have an obligation as a councilperson to listen to them and to honor their, their wishes. So I, I don't see, see me being able to vote to overturn the commission right now.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. Do I have a, do I have a particular motion down there from the council? Mr. Allen?
Well, let me make sure before I make this motion. We're not approving for a apartment house there.
No, no.
Just the demolition.
No.
I make a motion that we tear the house, let him have to tear the house down. That they tear the house down.
So you're, so you're making a motion to approve the demo?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a second for that?
It would be a motion to overturn the historic commission.
Exactly.
Is what basically the appeal is.
And to permit the demo. Do I hear a second? That motion dies for lack of a second. So with that said, we'll, we'll, we'll table this issue to a...
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion, please?
I'll look for another motion from the council.
I make a motion, we uphold the historic commission's denial of the, of the demolition of this property.
One second.
I have a motion to oppose, to oppose the, or to adhere to the, to the denial, and I have a second by Mr. Couch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We've got three, three that opposed it and one nay, which is Mr. Couch, I mean, Mr. Allen, I'm sorry. Motion carries. Thank you, folks. At this time, we'll move on to number two, our public hearing regarding the request of William and Kim Langsford to preliminary plat a 36.475 acre tract of Millennium County School Land Survey, abstract number 348 as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Langsford addition, and consider and approve said preliminary plat. The property is located northeast of the intersection of Highway 51 and Loop 567. Scott, you want to talk about that one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. This is a piece of property that's located just to the northeast of the new proposed northeast Loop 567 expansion. You can see the property bounded in yellow. It is currently in survey. What's being proposed is to create, in essence, one lot on a preliminary plat in order to hopefully get a hard corner there for future commercial development as the new loop is open, hopefully in the very near term, in order to develop that site. So we have the preliminary plat application along with the plat application. We have two variances associated with the application. The first is to not, to not upgrade the proposed loop expansion as, as it's a new textot facility to an urban standard facility. And the second is 39 and 45 to not extend sanitary, central sanitary sewer lines across the frontage of the proposed 567 loop expansion. We did get a preliminary plat of the site showing the initial utility layout, and the utility layouts will provide for continuation and connectivity points. It's just they'll be routed central through the property instead of along the 567 frontage. We got a report from the city engineer and the P&amp;Z saying that they're fine with the variances in the preliminary plat as submitted by the applicant. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should the council have any.
At this one, I want to note also that Mr. Perkel has re-entered the council. Counsel, any questions?
Yes, Mayor. Is, is the 8-inch sewer line, it, it's not there now?
That's correct.
What are they going, what are they going to do for sewer out there?
They will, there's sewer that actually ties over into a line that leads to Nettie Bacchus. If you're familiar, Nettie Bacchus actually has a line that comes along the loop and then ties up past Eagles Crest and goes up to A- Landing.
And that's what they're going to tie in?
That's what they'll tie into.
Okay.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing to anybody in the public who wants to speak on this matter. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more remarks or statements concerning this topic?
This the northeast corner, Scott?
This is...
And also the north, southeast corner? Or does it go across 51 the other way?
It does not go south of the new loop expansion area. You can see, basically, it's being truncated by the new textot right-of-way. So if they want to plat that portion on the south side of the right-of-way out, they'll have to follow preliminary plat and follow...
This one's just that northeast corner.
That's correct. And, and as a side note, you can see the city limit currently that's in green, so you can see this is kind of halfway in the city, halfway outside the city.
Have they volunteered to annex the rest of that portion of the property under the city of Granbury?
We are, we are looking at bringing the remainder of the balance of the track into the city.
Now, I understand that part of it, and that's why my question is about the sewer. If, has our, Alvin and those people looked at where we're going to run sewer down 567 or how that's going to work?
What we'll do, we got a conceptual design of how sewer is going to work, and once the preliminary plat goes through, it'll engage the engineers to work with our city engineer to design the sewer and how that site will be served by the 8-inch line.
Okay.
Counsel, any more questions?
Do we have, in our comprehensive plan, probably wouldn't include 567 or any development issues alongside of it, or not?
Our comprehensive plan does include the, the proposed loop expansion out to this area, and it does have this as a commercial node in the land use category.
Commercial node, okay.
I will say one more thing. If you can see the little notch to the southeast corner, there is a CCN that actually serves the residential property that's just to the north of this site. That's their water well. They do have a line and CCN through here. But this is in the city of Granbury CCN, so...
CCN, but that little well has a CCN for just its, for that little note, that little scratch off in there?
You know, half quick, you think we'll be trying to annex that? We can't do it until the road is dedicated over to the...
Well, the, the city can initiate voluntary annexations anytime. We're already looking at the survey maps. So outside of that, I, you know, I can't give you a definitive date. We're still working with the surveyor to do the deed research, so we're just...
But these people know that, right? That we're going to annex it?
We've, we've talked generally to the developer that the city has an intent to expand its, its incorporated boundary to include this site, and they're aware of it.
Counsel, any more questions? With that, I entertain a motion to approve the said preliminary plat.
She'll move.
With the variances.
With the variance, I'm sorry.
She'll move.
I've got a motion by Mr. Allen. Have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Perkel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That approves. Our next public hearing is regarding the request of Paul Young to replat Lot 1, Block 1 of the Price Young addition, Phase 2, as lots 1 through A and 1-B, Block 1 of the Price Young addition, Phase 2, and consider and approve this said plat. The property is located on West Highway 377, west of Holmes Drive. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. This is a piece of property that we've seen previously. It's currently platted and filed for record as one lot of record at the county courthouse. County commission recently changed its septic acreage threshold requirement for development in the county that's a certain distance away from the watershed and some arterials, going from three acres to two acres. As such, this, this particular piece of property is outside that particular buffer area and can be replatted from that three-acre threshold that we initially saw about a year ago over to two acres. And you can see Lot 1A is two acres on the spot, and Lot 1B is 2.9 acres, or previously under the three-acre rule, it, it basically couldn't be subdivided. So that's the intent and purpose of this particular replat, is to actually take that one lot of record and subdivide... and subdivide it into two lots now that the county commission has changed their septic threshold permitting acreage requirements. As tied to the property, the city council did issue this laundry list of variances to the property. If you recall, we put all those, our standard notes on the plat that's currently filed for record. Those notes are tied to the property and are on this plat as well. That is, the sidewalk extension note, the water note, the sewer note, extension through the right of way. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the replat as presented.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public want to talk about this issue? I'll now close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any remarks? Any concerns?
Motion to approve.
This time, I entertain a motion to consider and approve this said plat. I've got a motion by Councilman Couch, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding a request of Lee Overstreet to preliminary plat a 4.578 acre tract of the YG Lipcomb Survey Abstract Number 322 as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Harbor Rose addition, and consider and approve this said preliminary plat. This property is located north of the intersection of June Rose Court and South Mortons Street. This is a re-app here, so Scott, do you want to enlighten us on this one?
You're correct, Mr. Mayor Protem. This is an application that we saw previously that termed out. We have vesting term requirements on a preliminary plat. If no development momentum is established on these developments, basically, they term out. The applicant's wanting to re-up the same application. What you're seeing is a single lot of record that's running 144. It's bordering June Rose Court. The applicant is, thank you to the water line, looking at, prior to filing the final plat, extending the water line through, establishing a fire hydrant for fire suppression along 144. There's a note on there that basically says, at such time, the lot develops, once we know where the building footprints are going, there'll be a plat that shows the internal water line loop and the fire coverage for the individual buildings on site. We do have our standard notes on this particular plat as well. That's a carryover from the previously approved plat, that is sewer and sidewalk extension notes. As discussed previously, the central sewer is a good distance away, and it's not proportionate to extending it to this site at this time. Cost would be overbearing. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the variance and the plat application as presented.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public want to talk about this item? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any remarks or concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Couch, do I have a second?
Second.
With the variances, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
And we have a second by Mr. Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding a request of Welkman and Associates, which is Kroger, on behalf of the 3925 Partners LTD for Pacific Use or an SUP for the following. A fuel dispensing station, and B, a daily outdoor display at the front of the main store is shown on the submitted site plan, and C, consider approval of an ordinance providing for this said SUP. Now, this property is located at the southeast intersection of US 377 and FM4 within the WR McQuarrie Survey Abstract 385, and addressed as a 3925 East Highway 377 and 3600 3628 Farmer FM4. Scott?
Mr. Mayor Protem, this is a map depicting of the site. You can see it's just south of 377. That lineal frontage along 377 is just south of the adjoining property to the north, which is the HEB Luton Ranch Development Site. You can see it's also contiguous to FM4, just south of the Christian Brothers Automotive Facility along Highway 4. The property is currently zoned like commercial. What's being proposed there right now is a building footprint for a major retail chain. We've got a preliminary site plan of the placement of the development on the site. Again, if this was basically just the inside retail in and of itself, it would be allowed by right, and they would just be going through the platting process to establish infrastructure to support the development. As a part of operating that site, they've come forward and stated that they want a fuel dispensing station. If you look at the map, if I can direct your attention to the upper left-hand corner, circled in red is the location of the fuel dispensing station, as well as the placement of outside merchandise display. That area set aside for merchandise display is cross-hatched and bordered in purple along the main store, and there's some areas you can see where the fuel dispensing station is, cross-hatched along the islands, that's set aside for merchandise display as well. Again, these are just two SUPs that allow for that specific land use entitlement on the site. The retail can go by right, but the SUPs are to allow for the fuel dispensing and the outside merchandise display as this development progresses. They want the land use entitlement to be tied to the property as early as possible. The, I can tell you, the preliminary plat process, we're currently under review of that. We're coming forward to a DRC comment deadline where we're hoping to button everything up, and it'll be on the next P&amp;Z and city council rotation. And hopefully, from that point, we'll be engaging the engineers to do the detailed design engineering work. So, regarding the SUPs, for the daily outdoor display, we have two conditions. One is our standard statement that the placement of the merchandise equipment and goods in front of the store will be in a manner to not impede or block any pedestrian ingress egress. And secondly, the term of the SUP will be three years. I can tell you, this is the exact same term that was issued across the street, was three years, and it's the exact same conditions that were imposed on that. The one issue is they're going to take some time in order to get to the point where they're opening the store. So, what P&amp;Z did at staff's request is start the three-year term once that certificate of occupancy is issued and they're open for business. Whatever time they take in order to develop and construct the store, if it goes forward, we don't want that eating into their three-year term. And then, secondly, for the outside display or for the fuel dispensing station, there's also that outside display tied to the site plan as well. So, we'll have an incorporated site plan attached to the adoption ordinance showing where that display is. Lastly, I want to tell you, we're looking at parking, and we can tell you that the set aside for the outside display does not take up any required parking. Everything balances out at this point in time. Be happy to entertain any questions that the council may have.
At this time, I open up to a public hearing. Does anybody in the public want to talk about this item? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion or remarks concerning this item? Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. On that picture right there, Scott, what are the two squares on the left-hand side of the store? What's going to be stored there?
That is seasonal display. They're earmarking that for outside seasonal display.
Like Christmas trees?
So, if they get Christmas event stuff, and again, I can tell you, we check that for parking, any kind of parking issues, and that set aside is still good with the parking.
You said there's not no problem? I think it looks good.
Counsel, any more consideration comments? At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the SUP for A, a fuel dispensing station, B, the daily outdoor display at the front of the main store and shown in the submitted site plan, and also C, to consider approving ordinance providing for the SUP. Do I have a motion? I've got a motion by Councilman Allen, do I have a second?
Second.
And I will include the conditions of the P&amp;Z. Do I have a second with that? Second by Mr. Allen? Second by Mr. Parsons? Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That does approve. Our next public hearing is a two-part phase here. It's number six and seven. Without one, you don't get the other here, so I'm going to read both of them. It's a public hearing regarding a request of Texas Lakewood Corporation to rezone a 9.89 acre tract of the John Chinwes survey abstract number 118 from interim holding to a planned development with a base district R7 residential 7,000. The property is located west of Highway 51 and north of Hunter Park. To consider approval of the ordinance providing for the said rezoning. Number seven is request of the Texas Lakewood Corporation to execute a public improvement agreement for the public water, sewer, and street lights for the Phase 5A-1 of the Abe's Landing addition. Value of the public improvements are estimated at $159,909,000, and a public hearing regarding a final plat, a 9.89 acre tract of the John Chinwes survey abstract number 118, as lots 33 through 37, Block 6, and lots 1 through 14, Block 7, and lots 1 through 10, Block 8, of the Abe's Landing addition, Phase 5A-1, and consider approval of said final plat. The property is located west of Highway 51 and north of Hunter Park. Scott, enlighten us on this. We've seen this one before, and we're going to talk about it again.
Very briefly, hopefully. See, we rattled through this pretty quick. The first application is a rezoning request. We saw the preliminary plat application laying out the geometry of the proposed lots. We saw that they average roughly 9,000 to 9,500 square foot per lot. The applicant has since come forward with a single-family, PD single-family R7 zoning request. The variance contained within the PD is to allow for two five-foot setbacks on the development plan instead of the standard combined 15. That is, five on one side or 10 on the other, or seven and a half, seven and a half, but going no closer to the property line than five. That is the only variance that basically is enrolled into the PD request. As a side note, I will also say that the applicant, we had some discussions regarding fence material. Fencing and screening is also always tied to the zoning request, so we're going to touch on it briefly. This is a planned view of the type of screen that the developer is proposing to place along the Highway 51 frontage, coming into and out of the development along 51. You can see in blue, the two, the blue and purple highlights show the two distinct articulations for the fence. You can see one has very distinct bump outs or wells that are articulations that give an opportunity to put trees in, for example, or uplighting. The second has more concave articulations. We had P&amp;Z deliberate on these, and they really didn't have an issue with either one. They basically voted to approve the zoning stating that it would be the developer's preference to use one or the other. So, if counsel has a particular preference to one, the one to the north in blue, or the one to the south that is more concave, certainly, you can state your preference and roll that to the zoning ordinance, or as P&amp;Z mentioned, let the developer pick which one.
What was the blue made of?
Basically, and I may get the engineer up here, from what I understand, it's kind of an imprentation of a masonry design that's kind of imprinted on a wall panel.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing and let the public talk about it. Go ahead.
Okay, the screening wall, when we were doing the preliminary plat, these were the two options available to us with the precast masonry fence. The first is we could provide a 10-by-5 recess in the wall that would allow either an uplight or a tree. Basically, what we don't want to do is create a solid line that parallels the highway with no articulation or no interruption in the surface of that wall. Something, we don't want to create something ugly out there. With the precast masonry wall, we had two options. The first was to meander it through the 10-foot easement with some slight curves, or the second was to create a bump out that would allow us to put a tree to interrupt the face of the wall. Since this was done as part of our final plat, we actually included in the construction plan said our preference is to meander that wall through the right of way. If you guys don't have an objection to that, either way, we're allowing, we're just trying to break up the frontage of the wall and allow room for landscaping so that we just don't have a blank ugly wall that parallels the highway. The wall's pretty.
Are there trees out there right now? I mean, existing trees? So, you'll plant them also?
Yeah. Yeah, there'll be landscaping along the right of way. And the wall is a, it's a precast wall, but it's not just blank concrete. If you can see in that detail right there, we're proposing a chisel stone type look to it or a brick type look to it, either one. So, it'll be colored and cast and have pretty columns and caps, and it's going to be a good looking wall.
Are both of them out of concrete, Trace, or just the bottom one?
The top one is a wrought iron fence. After you turn into the development, it becomes wrought iron on the south side to match the wrought iron that's been built along the patio home phase on the north side.
This would be for the main road, for 51?
Right. Screening Highway 51, I've more or less insisted on a concrete wall for a couple of different reasons.
Sound.
Sound is very important, but also just the sense of privacy. You'll notice that the lots along Highway 51 are a little bit deeper than the others, and with that concrete wall, we've created a, you know, a sound buffer and a sense of privacy for those lots.
How tall is that wall?
Six feet.
And I can tell you, Mayor Protem and counsel, during the deliberations of P&amp;Z and counsel, they wanted that articulation and those plannings to soften up, I guess, the roadway or the streetscape along Abe's Landing. See, use Benbrook as a comparison, but everybody sees that white harsh straight wall that just looks uninviting or unappealing. And the developer's done a good job to work with the city and to accommodate that request to kind of soften things up.
Is there any more, anybody else from the public wants to speak on this matter? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any concerns? Questions? I'll close the public hearing. With that, I entertain a motion to consider and approve the ordinance provided for the said zoning, which is number six. Do we have to add the fencing in on that one? With that, I'll entertain a motion for number six to approve the ordinance of the provided, of the said zoning.
That's a move.
I've got a motion by Mr. Perkel, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Six approves. Number seven, to execute a public improvement of the PIA for the public water, sewer, street lights for the Phase 5A-1 of the Abe's Landing addition for the value of the public improvements estimated at $159,909, and a public hearing regarding the final plat of 9.89 acres tract, John Chinwes survey subtract on 118, as lots 33-37, Block 6, and lots 1 through 14, Block 7, and lots 1 through 10, Block 8, of the Abe's Landing addition, Phase 1. Consider this approval. Entertain a motion to consider the approval of this said final plat. Counsel, I did. So, we will consider and approve the PIA. Do I have a motion?
She'll move.
We got a motion by Mr. Allen, do I hear a second? I'll second it. You got a second?
No, we're just approving the PIA.
Right.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. So, we approve that. The next item will be the public hearing regarding the final plat of the 9.89 acre tract of the John Chinwes survey abstract 118, as lots 33-37, Block 6, and lots 1 through 14, Block 7, and lots 1 through 10, Block 8, of the Abe's Landing addition, Phase 5A-1. Consider approve the final plat. Do I hear a motion to approve the final plat?
I move approve the final plat with the hearing of the variances of Section 36A4 and Section 4.8.
Which is?
Sidewalks along 51 and streetlights along 51.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman...
You should put them in, I reckon.
Parsons, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That approves. Our next item is to consider and adopt a resolution providing for the approval and adoption of a rate schedule, RRM, which is a rate review mechanism for Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Texas Division to be enforced in the city for a period of time as specified in the rate schedule. I'm going to let Stuart talk about that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, counsel. As you're aware, Granbury is one of a great multitude of cities that is part of a coalition that's working with Atmos to talk about primarily gas prices of Atmos' natural gas. And this item comes from... And this item comes from that coalition called the Atmos Texas Municipalities. And every other city in the coalition has asked to pass this resolution. Basically, what it does is it implements what's called a rate regulation mechanism, rate review mechanism, that allows the city to have control over how much Atmos would charge for gas. Again, this is the same resolution that's been adopted by all the other cities in this, in this coalition. Included in your package is the background information from the coalition that was provided by them, as well as the resolution and the attachments there too.
Council, any questions to Stuart?
Yes, um, so...
Got some question by Councilman Couch.
Um, this is so that we can tell Atmos what they can charge?
Municipalities have the right to set, to help, to work with utility providers such as Atmos to set their rates. Yes. And this is a rate review mechanism that's required by the Utilities Code if you want to be able to tell Atmos what they can charge.
So it has nothing to do with Atmos asking us to participate?
Atmos is, Atmos is working with the coalition. And this, and this is actually requested by them and the coalition together.
Um, can you just explain to me, what is the benefit for them?
To Atmos?
Yeah.
Not Atmos' attorney, I don't know what the benefit to Atmos would be.
Okay.
But you can see on the email on the last page, all of the other cities.
It says, that's pretty big. And I think our attorney does suggest approval of this, but...
We go through this every year, don't we, Stuart?
Yes, we do.
It, it's pretty routine that we get, we get, um, I, this is from the coalition. We've talked about this before.
Counsel, any more discussion? So, I will entertain a motion to consider and, and adopt the resolution providing for the approval and adoption of the rate, the RRM for Atmos Energy Corporation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I got a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That does approve. Our next item, here we go. Discuss the status of the Opera House Development Project and consider approve any recommendation from the Opera House Redevelopment Committee. And I think we've got some pretty good information. I'm going to start out with Wayne McKeffin here. And Bill, stand by.
Well, I'm glad to say that the Opera House Redevelopment Project Committee has, in fact, brought forth a guaranteed maximum price. That's sort of the number we've been looking for. I'll let Scott, Bill Scott, share more on that, but we have gone, as the development committee, we've gone through line by line, looking at the cost. We have a reconcilment that we'll go through here in a, in a second as well, to show the change in cost from the initial project that we had defined. We are going to handle this through a, a change order. In other words, we're going to keep the same contract we have, but simply do a change order for that contract. And so with that, I'd like to have Bill Scott come up and if we could, we could pull up the file for the GMP. Rick, do you have that? It would be the GMP file. There you go.
Here we go.
Sort of go down to the bottom if you could, it's a little big on the screen here. There you go.
Too small now.
Bear with us, bear with us.
It's not...
There you go.
Yeah, going down a little bit lower.
Gets worse.
Okay, right there. You can see the two numbers that we are moving between, and that is the $2,195,000 of the previous contract and the $3,397,325. The $3,397,325 is the final guaranteed maximum price, and we're doing a change order for that difference amount. So, okay, Bill, why don't, I go to the next page on that. There's a reconcilment.
Concilment, a...
It takes you, well, it's $2,198,980, I think those, those are the last thing, but you can see the reconcilment here, and I'll let you go through what you want to first, Bill, but I'd like to get to the reconcilment as well and the change.
Yes, sir. Wayne said the original contract, existing contract, is to, to 198, 198,980. We've basically redesigned the project and bid the project and come up with a new guaranteed maximum price of $3,396,347. Those 13 items up on the screen are the items that have changed order of magnitude from our existing contract, their approximate values. And our, our duty was to provide reconciliation numbers that you guys could review, show how we got from our original GMP to our new GMP. 13 items. We added the basement below the stage, $170,000. We enlarged the backstage, about $300,000. Finished out the backstage, another $260,000. We had a structural issue with the existing roof, wasn't attached, so about $27,000 for that. We added a ticket and concession areas from the original plans, about $25,000. We've added stage flooring, both at the basement lid and the second floor rehearsal room, about $108,000. We've changed the handicap lift to a full-service elevator, about $51,000. We've added a chair lift for accessibility issues to the basement, about $25,000. We changed the stage lighting from an incandescent, to incandescent, which changed the electrical service and the HVAC loading for about $125,000. Changed the house lighting from incandescent to LED, about $38,000. We've added appliances. We've added a vacuum form system, a percentium wall, and we've added a contingency, $20,000. There's a rough breakdown of how you get from original, existing contract to the proposed
Uh, any, any questions on the contract, or the change in the numbers of the contract?
What, what's the dance floor, what are we talking about there?
Well, it's not really a dance floor, it's a, it's a engineered, highly engineered performance floor that sits over the existing, over the new basement level. It's got a structural support system spanning from wall to wall, and then there's an, this engineered flooring sits on top of that. It's a, it's a high-quality performance-type floor that you see on most theaters, this kind.
Just for tap dancing?
Well, I suspect it's probably for everything that could possibly ever come into that building.
What kind of floor was we going to have to start with on that, Bill?
Two sheets of plywood and masonite.
Kent, could you sort of address the issue as well?
The, the flooring that is...
Hey, folks, can I get you guys to let, let me know your name and your address for the secretary, so she can record it on the records, please? Thank you.
Good evening. Kent White, $10,000 flight plan in Granbury, Texas.
Thank you.
Okay, this floor is typically what you find in all installations in theaters currently. And what it enables is all types of, any kind of acrobatics, dance, tap dancing, any kind of movement that you typically see in a contemporary production is executed on this kind of floor. And the state of the art with the flooring has got to the point that most people that engage in this kind of activities will refuse to engage in that activities unless you carry that floor in the facilities. And it's a liability issue, it's an injury issue, it is, this is what everybody's putting in.
Here's my, here's my problem on it, Ken. Whenever we set up this committee, our budget was 2.2 or 2.4, I can't remember. Mr. Couch said he'd like to see it go down to 1.7. Well, by these figures, we almost doubled that 1.7. Actually, oh, about the same money. I mean, I don't see how Andrew's going to afford to pay rent in that place. I mean, at that kind of money, I mean, we'd have to get seven or eight thousand dollars a month for rent for, for the taxpayers that live here in Granbury, Texas.
And your question to me is?
Is there anything we can cut out of it, Mr. White? I mean, you're on that committee, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that we can cut out of it to bring that price back down?
In my opinion, no. And this is, this is not me as, speaking as somebody that's affiliated with a theater company. I'm 56 years old. I went into this business when I was six years old. It's all I know how to do.
Have you ever run one of these?
A theater?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
What do you think it'd take to run this? Money-wise, how much money do you think it's going to cost them to run this?
Uh, I'm not prepared to give any kind of figures like that. Yeah, I could do a study, I could do a study for you, but I can't...
I'd appreciate it, because this scares me as a councilperson.
Well, I think...
Are we going, excuse me just a second, Mr. White. I don't want to skip the price up so high that Andrew can't afford it or somebody else down the road can't. I know you're 56, I'm 63. And I know when you take a business, and a lot of people in here in business, and you overburden that business with debt, it's hard for anybody to make it. And, I mean, it's like, I think it's a beautiful building, I think it'd be the prettiest building on the square, but it might be the emptiest building on the square, too. And the taxpayers of this city's got to pay this back some way. And I haven't seen any financial, you're on the board of directors of the, of the theater. I haven't seen any financial statements since the last time the city bailed, bailed them out. And it, in our contract, it says they'll have one a month. I haven't seen that. And here we are, talking about spending $3.4 million. Have y'all got a plan?
Yeah.
When will the city get to look at it?
You know, I'm, I'm preparing our P&amp;L up-to-date from the inception of the company as we speak. I received the last packet of documents last night at our board meeting, and we submitted it to our accountant.
All I hear is that they need more money, more money.
Yeah, here's the thing. I mean, we, we've talked about this, and let's just be open and honest here. The Granbury Live space is prohibitive in a lot of ways, in a lot of ways. And we went into the Granbury Live space, and we felt comfortable doing that based on the fact that we would be in the Opera House in June. Well, we're not in the Opera House in June. So then, what's happened is the business plan that we went into the Opera House and the responsibility, I mean, the Granbury Live space, and the responsibility we took going into that space to keep theater going on the square, has kind of changed because of the postponement of the project. And it's, that is what has put us between the rock and hard spots. If you look at our numbers, we have, we have a graph that goes like this in attendance, and it's consistent. And it's consistent not only per show on a per-show basis, but it's consistent in time. The longer we're there, the more people will come. The longer the shows run, the more people that come. I mean, it is a momentum, and I've talked to several of the gentlemen about this, it is a momentum that is astonishing. It's a great thing to be part of, and it will only continue, but we can't let that momentum stop and then go...
I'm glad, I'm glad it's here, Mr. White, but the truth is, we bailed them out before June of this year.
We're, I, okay, I mean, yet your choice of words, I think we were working together on a situation that we both bore responsibility to. Because we can go back and we can say when we were originally supposed to be in the Opera House, we built a business model for that, that didn't come into fruition, then it was like, what can we do in the interim? We built a business model for that, now that's not come to fruition, now we're looking at November, and I hope it is November, and we're trying to create a business model for that.
And y'all making money.
Counsel, if I could, can I get back on track here? Right now, we are, we are talking about the approval of the change order number two, which we have out here in front of us, and individual items here, you know, we can talk about these, where we can, you know, and talk about why we are at the price that we are right now, but in the, but, but in the future of what it's going to do is ticket sales and things like that, that's what we're, not what we're talking about right now.
And I came up to answer questions about the flooring.
I understand, I understand, and that's, and that's what I'm here to...
We were going to talk about the floor.
I want to make sure we stay on the right track here, because we can definitely get way out there. So if there's any more, if there's any more questions on the, on the GMP that you have in front of you, counsel? And I, and I will answer, I will talk about the, the floor here and, and enlighten to what Ken has talked about, you know, we talked about this several times, we went back and forth on what type of floor we'd have to have, and it's, it's kind of like, if you're going to bring somebody in here to perform on a stage similar to performing on a football field, AstroTurf versus regular turf, if they have the possibility of getting injured when they are practicing, then that's a liability that they don't want, and so they won't come in here. So that answers, you know, that is why we have went with this, and it's actually not the best floor, it's the medium floor from what I understand, but it's, but it's a floor that we can get about anybody in the metroplex to come out here and perform on. So with that said, you know, if we're going to put this as, I think Councilman Allen calls it a Taj Mahal, then we want to make sure that we can get the Taj Mahal-type people in here.
You talking about demand it or run it or, or play?
Well, we're not talking about who's running it and all that, we're talking about what, what we're putting into this structure at this time.
I do have some questions for Mr. Combs when you get time there.
Okay.
Any more questions about the floor, gentlemen?
No.
Thank you, thank you, Ken. With that, I'll open up to discussion with the council. Mr. Allen?
I'd like to ask Mr. Combs some questions, please.
Mr. Combs, you want to come up to the grandstand? Uh, do you want to come up, will you come up? State your name and address.
I'm Terry Combs, 1920 Sterling Road in Granbury.
Mr. Combs, you've been with us since the start of this thing about two years ago, correct?
About 18 months, I believe.
Didn't we discuss these LED lighting with Brian Gaffin? We took them out and changed them to LED?
That's correct.
Why is it being charged $38,978 for them again?
Well, there was changes in the lighting that I can't really speak to. It was because of requirements or requests from Andrew regarding the quality of the LED light regarding the performance aspects.
Well, I was in that meeting whenever he requested.
I, I think Bill Scott can answer to that, because we, I was in the meetings, too, and we had a lot of discussion about that, and it has changed.
You may have discussed it with your drawings that had it incandescent.
He's the one that did the drawings, not, not you or Brian Gaffin, it was Andrew that actually did the drawing. But here's, here's the deal, Bill.
It, it, first of all, first of all, it was, it was a combination thing, Mr. Allen. Make sure we get that...
It might have been.
Yeah.
But here's the deal, it scares me on this, to both you gentlemen. We're talking about $3.4 million here. Now, if you can save us, say $500,000, you made an extra $150,000. And I heard you saved us $60,000 on steel. Was that a true rumor or, or not?
That's accurate, yes, sir.
What do we do with that money?
You, you use it to pay for the drywall that went over about 50.
Okay, we didn't pay for the floor was part of that?
Well, I guess you, you used some of that for that, yes, sir.
The deal that scares me is, and I, I've never built a commercial building, Bill, and I think you two guys are great at what you do, but I built a house before, and we really just got the foundation for it out there. And the big cost is going to be finishing it out. I'm thinking we're going to be looking closer to four, four to four and a half million dollars. Almost as much as a courthouse.
Not with a guaranteed max.
No, we're, we're looking at a guaranteed max, Mr. Allen.
With, with no changes.
Yes.
Was asked for.
Yeah. And if we do, we're going to add it to it, and it's going to go on and on and on and on.
Let's, let's hope not.
And I just don't see other taxpayers. I mean, I want the Opera House, we've already lost a couple hundred thousand on the other one. I want to go forward with it, but from a 2.2, thought it's going to be brought down to 1.7, and now it's at 3.4. Is anything we can do to bring it price down?
Sure.
What can we do?
Redesign it.
Well, I thought you was going to design it at 2.4, our budget figure, Bill.
Designed it towards the committee's directions elaborately.
You started out at 2.4, but the committee told you to add stuff, is that correct?
Started at 2.1, 198,980, hard bid GMP with a contract, and redesigned the entire project and basically brand-new programming, single-floor plan, and went step by step, and I would say the last four months.
So you can say that you could have built it for 2.198, is that right? Not this building?
You could have, I guess you could do a lot of that stuff for 2.2 million dollars, yes, sir.
So, if this committee keeps telling you to add on to it, then we'll be back up here again?
No, we're, we're permanent drawings are in.
That's, that's what we're here for today. That, that's what we're here for today.
Now, you got all the bids in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's what we're here for today, Council, is to vote on a, the second-
Change order one.
The second change order, the final change order, I'm hoping.
That's correct.
And, and, uh, all this stuff that's been put in here has been dissected and, and talked about, and thrown in and thrown out, and talked, and talked about again about what we need and what we need in this, uh, Opera House to make it the Opera House that we want it to be. Now, I would agree that there are some things in there that probably I would see as not things that we need, but when you look at the people that are in that business, and the people that, uh, have assured us that, uh, we need these type of things in the Opera House. And here again, and this is not in here, it, this is not in the discussion, I'm gonna get off a little bit, but there are, there are thoughts and concerns about what we can do to, to get some of this money back, Councilman Allen.
I understand.
And I, and I hope that those, uh, those plans come together, because I, for one, don't like going into something and, and paying a whole lot more money for. I wouldn't build a house if I contracted it for two hundred thousand and ended up buil- building it for a half a million. I would be pretty upset and I'd be broke. But, uh, we, we have the money here to put in this, and we're hoping that we can get some of it back out of it. And I think the plan that we've put together here, the one that you see right now, has been filtered through a lot of different people, and we've, we've, we've spent a lot of hours talking about it. But we, we can't stall very much longer, because it's gonna cost us even more money when this man here has to stop working. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir.
So, and he's at that point. If we stop, if we, uh, if we stop working, if we have to go back to the drawing board and look at this again, every time we do that, it's gonna cost us money.
It costs us anyway, but-
It's, it's gonna cost us a lot of money.
Here's the deal. It, we had a bond for one point two mil. If you take it away from three point four, that's two point two million. Where are we gonna get the money out to do that?
That's not something he can answer.
Wayne can answer.
Sure. No, uh, you know, we had put forth a, uh, funding plan of how we would get the money from bond money as well as, um, you know, different sources where we were going to get the money. Uh, the added funding right now will be coming out of the general surplus. So the one point two million additional cost right now will be coming out of general fund reserve.
And, and it's there, and I, and like I talked about, there's ways or there's, uh, plans already in place to put that money back. But that's not on the agenda right now. You gotta trust me.
I trust you, Mayor Prokam. I mean, I'm for it. I mean, I think it's gonna be the Taj Mahal of Granbury.
Yeah.
Probably Hood County.
Yeah.
But, uh, I just hope that we can pay for it. I just, I feel for the taxpayers.
Uh, Rick, did you call up the change order form? Okay, what you see in front of you here is the actual change order form. Uh, it's at one, one point one six two five two five. This is what we're asking you to approve, change order number two. And, uh, that's what the committee has recommended.
So Council, as you look at that, uh, I'll entertain any more discussion by the Council. If no more discussion, thank you, Bill. I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order number two, as stated.
I'll make that motion.
I've got a motion by Mr. Perkel. Councilman Perkel, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I've got a second by Mr., uh, Parsons. Any more discussion, Council? Mr. Couch, you look like you wanna say something.
Well, I just wanted, uh, Mr. Allen to, um, believe that there are other options out there, and, and we'll see those come forward in the next thirty to sixty days. Um, I know it's not the agenda tonight, but I think we need to have the city manager directed to, to, uh, uh, contract with Mary Saltrelli to look into grant, uh, grants that potentially might exist out there in addition to fundraising campaign.
And like to that, I, I do believe that, uh, people in Granbury, and I've seen it happen many, many, many times, that they will come up to meet the challenge of, uh, raising money for a situation like this. With that, I have a, I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That change order does approve. Bill Scott, continue to work.
Taxes go up, don't blame me.
You approve. Our next item is number ten, and, uh, at this time, I am going to remove number ten from the agenda for, uh, in, uh, for further discussion. At this time, the City Council will now recess the regular council meeting, and we're gonna convene into a meeting with the Employee Benefit Trust. As you know, last year we entered into a trust with the Council, so this will be a separate meeting. Y'all are welcome to stick around for this also. So at this time, I will call to order the Employee Benefit Trust meeting on June the fourth, two thousand thirteen. It is exactly seven twenty-five. The first item on the agenda is consider and approve a contract for employee health insurance benefits. I'd like to call upon Kristy Sanders to enlighten us on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Prokam and Council. We have before us tonight a decision to make about our employee healthcare benefits. Um, as you are probably already aware, we have, um, some serious challenges before us concerning our health insurance benefits this year. We have a two-part problem, um, concerning our health insurance rates as the bids are received. The first part is the Proposed Healthcare Reform Act that will be, not the Proposed, the Healthcare Reform Act that will be going into effect, um, January first. In advance of that, many organizations, including cities, are seeing rates increased by the insurance companies. It's, it's standard, get on the internet, Google it, everybody knows it's happening. The other part of our problem this year is that we experienced extremely high experience ratings on our insurance. At six months into our plan year, we were at a hundred and fifty-five percent loss ratio, which means that our insurance company lost money on, on the city of Granbury. When that happens, when you go out to bid and put out the bids for the health insurance, sometimes you get into a situation where companies don't want to bid on you. And that's exactly what happened with us. We were put out to all the major carriers, and all of them refused to bid on us, because they believe that we are going to cost them money. Based on our experience ratings, they are correct in that assumption. We do have a renewal bid from Etna. Etna was required by law to, and by our contract, to, uh, offer us a renewal option, which they have done. The initial renewal rates quoted to us, um, are item two on your, um, paper and on the slide. Um, it goes in that slide. Um, were a thirty-eight percent increase on our, our current rates, above our current rates. Um, we, we talked to, to Etna in depth. Our, um, benefits provider, um, our, our benefits consultant, rather, really worked hard to try to come up with a, a better offer. And we believe that number nine on, I guess, the next sheet is, nope, go back one. Is gonna be the, the best option for us.
It's number what, Kristy?
Number nine on that big wide sheet.
Oh, they can go and order it.
The third, fourth column over. We wanna look at nine.
Okay.
This, this is the one that we're proposing is, is the best option for the city. Um, we are still looking at a twenty-eight percent increase in our rates. But by doing a little bit of, of finagling with these plans, we've been able to, to save ourselves some money over the renewal option. In the past, what we currently have is a five hundred dollar deductible plan for our staff with a fifteen hundred dollar out-of-pocket max for in-network expenses. The, the renewal, which was thirty-eight percent, would've kept that exact plan. We also offer our employees the opportunity to buy down to a, to a different plan if they want to have a little bit of help with their premiums, have a little lower premiums. They can take on a little bit of the additional risk and go to a thousand dollar deductible. What we're considering and what we're proposing to you tonight is that we flip-flop that plan. Rather than the city offering a core plan of five hundred dollar deductible and a ninety seventy, um, co-insurance and a fifteen hundred dollar out-of-pocket max, we're proposing that the core plan be a thousand dollar deductible with an eighty sixty, uh, co-insurance and a thirty-five hundred out-of-pocket max for in-network. If employees need to have the lower deductible, they can buy up and pay the higher, the difference of the higher premium to have the five hundred dollar deductible plan with the ninety seventy coverage and the fifteen hundred dollar out-of-pocket max. This, this way, we are able to kind of split the difference between the staff and, and the city, and give the staff a little bit more of the risk, and allow people who need the lower deductibles and who need, basically the people who are using the insurance. We, we've got basically five individuals that, that drove our rates up. And we didn't feel like it was fair to punish a hundred and forty-two employees because five employees or, or their dependents were, were causing the rates to go up. So, I'm gonna be real honest, none of these options are great. They're all gonna cost us a lot more money. But we, we feel like we've proposed the best case scenario of what we can do without, without putting too much burden on the staff and still limiting the impact of the cost to the city.
Um, Kristy, is there opportunity to go to a bigger pool?
Well, if we didn't have such, excuse me, such high experience ratings, that's been discussed in depth, but who would wanna be in a pool with us right now?
Right.
Um, we've talked about it with the county, we've talked about it with the, with the ISD. There's a couple of problems with that. Uh, number one, none of their, their open enrollment periods, none of their plan years coincide with ours. Our plan year is August to July, theirs is October to September. So that's a little bit of a problem we could probably work out. But frankly, no one wants to touch us right now. I've talked to other cities who, who prior to Obamacare were very interested in this, but everybody's just kind of in a waiting game, and they're afraid to do anything, because they're really not sure how Obamacare is going to affect us. And with our high experience ratings, if, if I were your insurance advisor, I would say, don't touch those people right now. Give them a few years and see what happens.
How, how do we get into this?
How do we get into this? We have sick people.
We weren't in a bigger pool early on.
Well, we were self-funded until last year.
Right.
And we, we looked at the writing on the wall and, and our ongoing claims and, and made a decision last year that this was gonna be a way for us to limit the impact. And if we were self-funded, these, these individuals that had such high claims, we would've had lasers on those people, and we've been paying all that money out of our pocket anyway.
Up to forty thousand, I believe, with it, Kristy.
No, there was- Had to hold them out.
If you weren't self-funded-
Oh, now, right now. Yeah. You know, the bad part of this thing is, though, that, that out-of-pocket for employees went from fifteen hundred to thirty-five. Family out-of-pocket went from three thousand to ten, up to eighteen.
Yes, sir. The, the other, the other alternative is on, is on the column entitled Option Three, which was gonna put those numbers to a two thousand dollar deductible with a five thousand dollar out-of-pocket for an individual and a ten thousand for family. So we really feel like we've gotten the best deal we can out of Etna. Um, you, you don't see five hundred dollar deductibles anywhere anymore. Those are things of the past. They, they don't exist in insurance companies hardly anymore. And so by, by going to the thousand dollar deductibles, our core plan, we're splitting the difference with the staff. We're not throwing a two thousand dollar deductible on them. We're not throwing a five, I mean, jumping from fifteen hundred to five thousand dollars out-of-pocket would've been a huge impact, especially on those people that use the insurance. So basically, we looked at this thousand dollar plan with a thirty-five hundred, and yes, it's more money, but it's not nearly as much as five thousand.
Yeah, when we talk about giving employees a, a raise, this kinda stuff just hurts us financially.
I would, I would challenge you, though, to, to look real hard at, at the situation from an employee's point of view. They went without raises when the economy was bad. They have had low raises. Um, we, we have several issues where we can cite our employees doing a great job above and beyond the call of duty when money was tight, and they stuck it out and stuck with us. And I think the staff deserve this.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you, Kristy, but what I'm saying is that when you get a twenty-eight, thirty-eight percent increase in the deal, uh, did you know this before this bid came in last week?
I knew it was gonna be high based on our experience ratings. I didn't know how high it was gonna be. But when they told us at six months that our experience ratings were a hundred and fifty-five percent, I knew we were gonna have a problem.
What would happen if we, uh, voted to take this policy and say, three months from now, six months from now, are people getting hurt, sick, whatever, kinda stopped? Then would the rate come down?
It should, yes.
Or is this policy for a year?
This policy is for a year, and, and it is, the contract is for a year, and these rates will be in effect for a year.
So honestly, it's not gonna come down this year?
Well, the, it's not gonna come down this year. But if we can keep our costs down throughout the year, next year, we should have a lower experience rating and therefore lower costs.
Is there a minimum earned on this? Is it a hundred percent?
Minimum, I, I don't understand.
Well, a lot of commercial policies, you know, when you enter into a policy, it's, you pay twenty-five percent regardless of you switch carriers. So are you saying that we're locked in?
We are locked in for a year on these rates with this area. And they are, they are required by the contract to offer us a renewal rate.
I think all of them, most of them, well, all of them that we've looked at was the same way. I don't think you'll find one that, you can't, you can enter into a partial contract.
Would TML look at us, though?
They, they did.
TML looked at us and said, no, thank you.
Yeah.
And honestly, when TML won't bid on you, that's bad, 'cause TML will bid on just about me.
The bottom line in what Kristy's saying, you know, we, we are, we are at a, we're a high risk right now. And, you know, we, we got there not because of choice, but, you know, there was incidents that happened, and she mentioned, you know, five or six or whatever it was that got us into that rate. So now we need to work and do the things that we can do to try to get back at a different rate and maybe even to a lower rate, and there's some things out there. But even those things cost you money when you have to implement them, so.
I've only used it, Mayor, two times, and both times, they refused to pay. If I hadn't paid extra to hospital, I'd be owing about eighteen hundred dollars. The other time, my wife, when she went in, I can't tell you how much I've had in my pocket, they refused. I've had a stint, a triple bypass. My doctor told me, go get a pass, and they refused, so I didn't need to go. And we're paying this kinda money for no insurance, is basically what we're doing.
Well-
And I hear it from employees, too.
I don't, I don't know about your specific instance, and it would be inappropriate to discuss it in an open forum like this. However, I can tell you that looking at what they're paying, they're paying for something.
I understand that.
Now, they may not be paying for what your doctor ordered, and I don't know about that. I can't speak to that.
But I've had employees in the city say the same thing, Kristy, that they have problems with it.
I, I agree that this is not the best insurance money can buy. It, it should be for what we're paying, but this is what we have to choose from.
Yeah, I see. You didn't try Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Yes, sir, we did. They did, they declined to bid on us as well. Um, TML, United Healthcare, Cigna, a company called Trustmark that I've never heard of, Humana, and Blue Cross, all declined to bid on us. This happened to me, um, when I was at the city of Stevensville, and it was a hard thing to live with. Um, we had one year, we had about five or six people who got cancer all in the same year. And it hurt us really bad that year, but we rode it out, we stuck with our deductible, and the next year, it came down. We, we made the employees really aware of what was going on and got everybody on board with trying to keep costs down, and it, it helped, and those people got treated for their cancer and had what they needed it. And the next year, the rates came down. We just have to ride the pony for a little while, and it hurts.
When did you go out for bids on these, Kristy?
We went out to bid in February.
In February?
Yes, sir.
And we're just now hearing about it?
Well, we didn't get all the bids in until, you know, middle of March. And then we spent a lot of time going back and forth with these companies, trying to make sure. In fact, we didn't have these final numbers till today, because we, we fight and, fight and chew and scratch to get every little last penny we can get out of them to get the best-
We had to rebid it, too, if you remember.
We, we did have to rebid it, because there was a problem in the, uh, in the bidding process that didn't get put in there. So we did have to rebid it, and that, that delayed us about four weeks, so.
Most of these looked like they'd come in in April and May. You know, I sure would like to know, we had a problem back then, instead of tonight.
The, the city manager can speak to that.
We just got this tonight, whenever we got here. I didn't get it in my package.
Well, like I said, we didn't have these numbers until today, so I couldn't put it in your packet earlier.
I, I agree that the final numbers, the final numbers didn't come in till today, and, but the final numbers were lower than the numbers that you had, that you were looking at earlier. So the, she, she, she did find some, uh, some escape there that would, uh-
Found a way to save a hundred and eleven thousand dollars today.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. So that's what you're looking at right now as a savings.
A hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars we were able to save today.
You're looking at the savings now, you're not looking at what, uh, would've been out a week ahead. Yeah, as of today.
I don't know if I could do it, uh, do- I don't know if I could do anything else with another day, but this is where we are. We have open enrollment scheduled for June 20th and 21st. Our plan year starts August 1st and we have to either, we have to make a decision that we're going to do this plan or we're not going to offer insurance to the employees anymore and that's what we're down to.
Anybody who went with a $5,000 or $10,000 deductible, would that bring it down?
Sure.
Do you think other companies would look at us if we had that kind of deductible?
I don't think you'd have any employees left.
I didn't want to ask you.
I don't know. I don't know if they would or not, but the point is, is it was put out to bid and we have to make a decision and we don't have time to wait and see what other companies would do at this point.
I'd love to see this get started earlier next year, maybe start now.
Well, here's part of the problem. We can't really start any earlier than we do because insurance companies won't start bidding until they have six months of experience.
But answering your question, Councilman Allen, we are starting now for next year because we're going to look at some things that will reduce these rates for us because we have to do that as an ongoing process.
We're looking at a company that will basically shop.
Help us get some better rates. We kind of have a monopoly with the healthcare situation here in Granbury, so we don't have as many choices as maybe we would like to have. But this company will help us find the best rates, both in Granbury and the surrounding area.
Who's the company?
Compass Health Services. And for a pretty nominal fee, about $5 per employee per month, they will shop those services for us and help us to bring the rates down. Now, I will tell you, this is not a this week, next week fix. This is a long-term fix that we have to get the employees on board with. I don't have a staff to sit there and hold them by the hand and make everybody do it for everything. I don't even know about a lot of the things that they use their healthcare for and that's the way it should be. But this company can help them, they can do it privately, they can do it online, they can do it by phone. And the city of Mesquite is using them, a lot of other cities are using them and they're seeing some more results.
I do pay for our employees to have to pay that kind of difference in insurance. I do.
I do, I do as well.
Counsel, any more discussion on the Employee Benefit Trust? With that, I intend mostly to consider and approve, to approve the contract for the employee health insurance with the said, with either proposal number nine. Right?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
And I have a second by Mr. Perkel. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Is your consent approved? With that? Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Chris, do we have any health incentives for our employees, general memberships? Any kind of proactive?
We've really done it this time. We have talked to some people about instituting a wellness program. Part of the services at the Compass organization will help us along those lines to use some incentives. The problem there is money. Wellness programs are expensive.
And that's what I was talking about earlier, Councilman Cassidy, that all these programs we can put together, non-smoking, you know, different things we can put together for our employees, but like Kristy talked about, a lot of those cost money also. But the return on would be pretty good and that's what we're going to work towards to try to get into a lower rates.
The other aspect you have to keep in mind too is we have an aging workforce here and it is typical to see insurance rates go up as your workforce ages. It just goes with the territory.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you.
At this time, there's no further discussion. We will adjourn the Employee Benefit Trust meeting. At this time, the council will reconvene into the council meeting. Now, we will declare the city council is convened into open session and that all members, excluding Mayor Craft, are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551A, got 0171, consolation with our attorney.
The city council will now reconvene into open session. The action taken, there was no action taken on the, I'm sorry, here, paperwork here. No action taken on the lake level issues. Is there, on the Charlie McAvain lawsuit, we have a motion on that one, Mr. Allen?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the settlement agreement in case number C2012392, Charles Mc, Charlie McAvain versus City of Granbury.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Couch. Any discussion, council, anymore? With that, we'll entertain, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That lawsuit is approved. If there is no further discussion, the city council is now adjourned.